Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Especially if you're still by the United States of America. To your public resistance on nation and.
Okay.
All right, we might need a minute or two. To work through this to make sure members can hear. So. Okay. Liz, you can hear us now?
I can, thank you.
So is that allowed us?
Yeah, that's absolutely okay.
On the on the cabinet. For um. For new. For new members, just to just so you know, like, this is for our meetings, this is like the. The third location, this is Plan C for a public meeting. So typically, obviously, the chamber, we have all the stuff that comes with TV production, chamber, conference room A. At the inside, we get to tier, tier three. Um, we have Matt standing at six. So, um, uh, people who are at home, just so you know, we have a, we have a speaker, but it's. It's a little challenging, especially with the heat going to hear you well. Um, so we will, uh. I'll try to keep an eye on the chat as we go, and Matt's working on, um. Matt's working on trying to reach out, see if we can get a little bit more technical assistance, so not perfect, um. But I think if you get our attention via the chat and, and um, do you want to speak, we can um, listen carefully. To the not very powerful speaker right in the back row. So.
Can you, can Byron hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think Liz and Byron both can hear us at this point.
And we don't have Carrie, and we're not gonna help you. We might have Carrie, okay? All right, and I think we can start, okay? Can we start?
Yeah.
All right. All right, well, actually, I think I'm gonna um, turn it over to you, Zach, to um, finish up two items from our last meeting. The first is the consideration and approval of employment for the Portsmouth High School math teacher.
Right, we previously uh, previously discussed uh, this candidate, and just didn't have an vote at our last session, so we. Suspended things, so if we can take how to approve um. This particular appointment, just so you know, this person is currently, just uh, this person is currently already working for us as a regular daily sub. Uh, this would then put the names on terms up, and then we would retro, we'd go back to retro um, uh, to when it actually started. To uh, to reflect you proving this fashion.
Okay, do we have a most, oh, thank you, Ted, second, we have second, Tish, although any discussion. Roll call, so that's right, we have to do roll call, okay, roll call, please.
Liz Barrett?
Yes.
Pip Clues?
Yes.
Tish Campbell?
Yes.
Carrie Nolte, absent. Brian French?
Yes.
Nancy Clayber?
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport?
Yes.
Lee Hudson, absent. Byron Maddow?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you, everyone.
And we can hear you guys better now than we could before, so.
Um, did you bring the coffee cup?
I didn't, I didn't bring the coffee cup, I went to, I went to Paulette's class here, uh, envelope uh, for this one than my coffee cup, so just a reminder. Uh, the city charter, um, uh, within the city charter is the establishment of an ethics group. There's only called into action if it's needed, to be called into action for things that happen in relation to city government. Uh, and based on a blind draw, we, we have a member uh, who was on the, on the uh, group. Uh, and last time I drew, I ended up with a very man in locker, uh, for, so, uh. Are you ready to be?
I'll be blacklisted, yeah, fine, I can be blacklisted.
Go for it. So this will be the school board's representative to the Ethics Committee.
Liz Barrett. Liz, did you hear that?
I did, thanks.
Come on down, oh, sorry.
Looking forward to not doing it, but if we have to.
So, uh, so Liz, I think what you can anticipate is, so I'll uh, notify Kelly Barnaby. Uh, the city clerk uh, about uh, your uh, appointment. And then I assume her office will reach out to set up the initial organizational.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you all. Now we will move on to the workshop session, and I'll turn it over to Zach.
Okay, uh, so the first, uh, first of our, our workshop sessions, again, are an opportunity to do a deep dive. On an issue or set of issues uh, in connection with the budget, uh, it's an opportunity to um, to bring in some folks. Uh, who work for us, uh, to have an opportunity to, to give you some information, and then answer some questions in depth of. About some aspects of what we do, uh, and what we've tried to do is we've tried to establish a few different topics. That we've heard over the course of the last year, uh, board members' interest, and then we thought were connected, really connected back to budgets. Uh, and so the first of those is uh, added district placements in special education. Uh, and so we have Dr. Rick Matty, who's our, our Director of Student Services, uh, who is, as everybody knows. Uh, Rick is in the midst of his first year with us, after having served in a similar role, uh, in Keene. Uh, and we're really lucky to have uh, Rick on board, uh, but is also, Rick's also in the midst of learning. Um, some of the operation, and so Nathan and I will chime in, Daddy is needed, um, where we can help, but uh, Rick, if you. Great, wanna take us away.
Yep, my name is Rick Matty, I'm Director of People Support and Instruction. Um, I am really happy to be here and humbled to be the Director here in Portsmouth. It's been a really pleasant experience so far, so just wanna say how happy I, happy I am to work for you in Portsmouth. Um, so how should we present this, Zach?
Let me, since I'm already logged in, maybe I can go ahead and uh. Share. Your presentation. And we can, we can do the old stupid forward one, Zach.
Slideshow?
Yeah.
Do I have to move?
Yeah, perfect.
Uh, I can, I can.
Yeah, so. The initial title of this presentation was demystifying out of district placements. Uh, but I decided to change the title a little bit and just say board overview. Because my goal is to really, you know, give um, or to increase your level of understanding around that district placements. They are a major financial driver to the out of just, uh, to the special ed budget, and the budget as a whole. So I do think it's, it's important that you all have a. Uh, understanding of that, so. Um, I wanna just make sure that I watch my acronyms, a lot of educators speaking acronyms, especially special educators. So if I do that, please ask questions, um, I'm happy to clarify anything along. So the next slide. Um, so what does the term out of district placement mean? To just start there. It's a really common term used across all the districts in New York. So it really is a pretty standardized term rates. And what it means in relation to Portsmouth is, it's when a Portsmouth student uh, attends. A school that's approved by the New Hampshire Department of Ed. Outside of the Portsmouth School District. Okay, so. I wanna, often I'll say DOE, and that's Department of Ed. So if I say New Hampshire DOE, I'm speaking of kind of the state department that we report to. So I just wanna clarify real quick, these are not students that are enrolled privately by their parents or caregivers. They're not students that are homeschooled, and they're not students that are experiencing homelessness. Those are different categories than out of district placements, so. All right. Um, actually, you wanna jump back real quick, Zach?
Sure.
So when I say New Hampshire Department of Education approved. It's really important to, for me. To explain that. The tuition rates are set by the Department of Ed. The curriculum is maintained by the Department of Ed. The buildings are inspected, the facilities are. Not maintained, but inspected, so every one of these out of district schools are. Very much endorsed by our stakeup. So I just want people to know that they are bona fide schools, so in terms of curriculum, instruction, certified staff, those sorts of things. Okay, yeah. So how are out of district placements made? They're made very carefully. And over a prolonged period of time. They're not acute reactions to instructional challenges in the schools, they really are. You know, just prolonged challenges, and. How they're made is a team of educational professionals that are familiar with the student. Come together with the parents, or the guardians, or the people caregivers. And often the student too. And they make decisions, pretty seismic decisions based on. The student's needs. Our goal in Portsmouth, and all of these, we're pretty heavy meetings at times, is to build consensus. So make sure that we're all in agreement, because there's really important stakeholders at this meeting for this student. Um. So building consensus is one of our keys. And another kind of guiding light for us is the least restrictive placement for a student to succeed in school. So we try to, you know, growth is part of instruction, growth is part of. Learning, and we try to make sure that those growth opportunities exist in abundance for that student if they go out of district. So least prescriptive environment is, is, is a phrase that we often use in special. Any questions on, on those?
I was just gonna say, you know, I think a way to think about it, right, is I think when you think about restricted, it doesn't, it's a legal, it's a legal phrase, and um, and so. It, it, uh, I don't know, in some ways, we're like, I'm gonna put a kid in a restricted environment, feel, you know, not comfortable. Uh, the idea is, I think, basically the idea is, if we have a student with a disability, we're trying to create. The, we'll call it most typical school day possible for the student based on their disability. So um, and we want, and we wanna do that in the way um. Incrementally, very often what we're doing is incrementally trying to tweak just a little bit, because again, the idea is, our, the best possible scenario. Is that all kids are with their age-like peers, they're in uh, the same classrooms, they do the same types of things. Uh, and so we, we don't wanna do more than is necessary to bridge the educational disability. Uh, we wanna do just enough, and that is, um, and that is the least restrictive environment. You know, the least changed environment in order to be able to access your education. Uh, and there's a little bit of a tug sometimes in terms of trying to calibrate exactly where that is.
Um, just a friendly reminder about, so FERPA involves protecting student confidentiality and sense of miscommunication. And I, I just think it's good for the board to know that we adhere to this very um, strictly. We take FERPA and HIPAA very seriously, so. It was just an opportunity to, to remind myself and everybody how important that is for our students and our families, so.
And in particular, I think we talked about the fact with this particular topic, it's such a small number of students, so some of your questions today. We might, we might get a little um, vague about, because we think we're approaching. A position where somebody who was watching the meeting, um, or yourself could identify an individual student. Uh, we, uh, we don't want that to occur, uh, kids are, kids have a right to the privacy, particularly around disabilities. Uh, but, but just in general around their education, um, you know, families and kids have a right to. Expect that their, that their uh, situation is gonna be held private unless they decide it's not going to be. So some of your questions, because we're starting to go such a small example size of kids, there'll be times when we might not be able to go all the way to answering it in a public meeting. Uh, so just be aware as we do that, that's, um, that we wanna be as transparent as possible about this process and. Uh, all that, but also respect those privacy rights.
Yeah, and we have important data points that I think will give you all an idea of where we are, and also maintain the privacy. Of our students, so, yeah.
Thanks, Zach.
So here is the out of district continuum. I like to think of it as almost like a ladder, which is why I have that ladder up there as. As a. Pictogram kind of thing, um, so just to the left, to my left or your right, uh. Day schools would be our buildings. And then students would move along that continuum depending upon their needs. Their school-related needs, so it's really important that we pass along that continuum carefully. And not jump or skip over any of those. Steps, if you will, you know, if you skip a rung on a ladder, you, you get a little imbalanced, you might end up in trouble. It's the same thing when we work with placement, we really wanna make sure that our students are challenged in the least restrictive. And Rick?
Yeah.
The least restrictive by, I don't wanna say by definition, because I won't speak for you, but the least restrictive is homeschooled. In the regular classroom.
Oh, where? Well, homes, not homeschool, but we mean our hometown. Not homeschooling.
Yes, in my, in my, in my resident district, okay.
In my, in my school, in my hometown, that I would be normal.
Homeschool has its own competition, I go, man, since I've interrupted. Uh, Carrie has joined us, and I'm wondering, she's wondering, can we share this to screen in Zoom?
I think, I, I know.
Cause it's, it's not, it's a. Yes, Nathan, that's a good, okay, yes. So that, that's what you're saying, off, off the screen here, I'm getting at the continuum is Portsmouth School Board. And that's not out of, that's in district. Yeah. So I'd like to know.
Yeah. Okay, I went down there, we good?
Yeah, that's perfect. So a data point I can share is it's um, it's less than one percent of our student body that attend out of district schools. Then that's preschool right up through high school, so three to twenty-two, it's less than one percent of our student body. Um. And then there was a recent revision to the law, and the entitlement now goes to age twenty-two in New York, so. Twenty-one. So, and that's across the whole student. Big picture, how do these originate, the out of district placements? So we have four categories. Foster care, court placed. DHHS placed, which is the Department of Health and Human Services, not the Department of Ed. Department of Health and Human Services, and then we have district placed, and I'll talk about each one of them. When we look at the total number of out of district students we have. It's nineteen, and we'll get to that later on. About two-thirds of those students are district placed. And about one-third fall in the other three categories. I think that's a fair way to describe the cell size without giving. Numbers, so a third are in either foster court or DHHS. And then two-thirds are district placed.
So when you say foster care, those are, are um, students that. Are part of the Portsmouth School District. Um, not so much in a special ed, but because the foster care is outside of the district.
These would only be special.
Special ed, okay.
The regular ed students would go to the school there.
Okay.
As regular kids, these would only be special ed students.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome. And so here's some details about foster care, um. And, and that metric of the one-third and two-thirds is really what I'm familiar with in other districts, so that ratio is, is really similar. Uh, in my experience. Foster care, it's when a student, a student with an IEP, so an Individualized Education Plan. Ends up with a family or in some sort of group living situation, and it's not always in New Hampshire. So what we do is we stay with the student, and we partner with the receiving district. To, to create the LRE for that student. Most of the time, like Nathan said, it's often the regular classroom, right there, but often it's a little, it's more restrictive than that depending on the student's needs. We also have something called a bid meeting. That's a best interest determination meeting. And that's where the team of educational professionals sit down and discuss what is in the best interest of the child. And then make the determination of the school location. So in those situations, placement is kind of taken out of our hands. But we're part of the decision, but it's also with the receiving district. And we work with DCYF, the Foster Care Agency, to place that student in the most appropriate location. And sometimes that means busing them from Dover back to Portsmouth, or somewhere if it's doable. Sometimes the student stays, goes to that new school where they are fostered, because that's where their friends are, that's where they live. It's very carefully decided upon when we make these decisions.
And who's, in this foster care type of scenario, Rick, who's, who's at the table? So we, as a school district, are at the table, who else is at the table?
Yeah, so we're at the table, we'll have a special educator at the table, Portsmouth would have a regular educator at the table, Portsmouth would have an LE, uh, an administrator. So if I say LEA, that's a, that's just a term for administrator, special administrator. Um, and then the foster care representative would always be there, we often call them the DCYF worker. Division of Children, Youth and Families. And then the receiving district is there, and that often mirrors our team. And the parents, of course, are there. And sometimes the student, if the student's old enough, you know, eighth grade and higher, the student is frequently part of the team. Younger students, not so much, sometimes they come in at the end. Um, and they're celebrated, it's, um. But yeah, that's usually how it happens, and we make the best decision we can on behalf of the students, and that often means transportation or. Some unique arrangement that's not typical.
That's foster care, that's one of the areas.
Yeah. I, I have more questions on the floor tonight, I just. Um, and I don't wanna get ahead of you, but I know later you're gonna talk about district placement. In foster placement and foster care situation like this, it's not. It may certainly, is it true that it may certainly be the case that the program needs are already well met? Right here. But because of the living situation changing, finding the nearest relative or the best relative, the best place. That might be sufficient for a student to find. The local school, or for the team in the bid meeting to find that the local school is most appropriate. Where, for instance, in a district placement, normally they're placed because we're not finding the right program fit here. So in this case, doesn't have to be about program, doesn't have to be about student needs other than housing or building arrangement, okay? It's very different in. We don't see a ton of these.
There's not.
No, not a ton, yeah. Not a ton, um, but sometimes it's. Siblings and families, um, and sometimes it kind of runs in cycles, but yeah, don't see a ton of them.
So at what point in like a foster situation, um, say, is Portsmouth no longer responsible? I mean, at what point in the foster care program, if, um, say, a, a student went to go live with a grandmother. Two towns over, in the foster care system, what, um, at what point is Portsmouth no longer considered that student's?
Yeah.
Um, district?
You know, it's really case by case.
Okay.
So if. The grandparent is just a temporary guardian. Then Portsmouth could remain the district of liability for the long term.
Okay.
If the grandparents adopt the child, and then it becomes, you know, it's kind of like. That's where the child lives, they're their parents, then that will become the district of.
So when it becomes a more permanent?
Yeah.
A more permanent place for the student.
Yeah, and we follow the court. So we don't, we have, we don't establish that as a, as a school system, this court kind of tells us that kind of stuff, through DCYF.
But the concept is while a student's in flux, and we don't know whether they're gonna end up with a permanent family. Most very often, the idea is keep whatever you can keep stays, stay, uh huh, which would mean stay with us, you know, if you're. If you're potentially moving on to a kinship placement or something somewhere else, as long as that's not totally clear or permanent, you most likely do this.
Um, is the question for you, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Liz.
Um, just to be clear, because I mean, I, I did preface this with, um, I was an attorney for DCYF in Manchester, so. I wasn't like heavily involved in situations like this, but obviously, um, I dealt with them, and so just to be clear for everybody else. Uh, it's at that bid meeting that is determined which district is gonna take uh, control, um. Or is it purely based on the court?
The court assigns the district of liability. And then the bid meeting determines where the student should go to school. Sounds paradoxical, but it could be opposite, it could stay as a Portsmouth student. And then we could, you know, any decision could be made. Does that make sense, Zach?
So it could be a student who starts with us in Portsmouth, their situation changes, they are now gonna. Um, live with a foster family that's in Hampton. Um, Hampton becomes the district liability, but the kids would still be coming back.
Correct.
To us, I mean, that'd be most, the least, I mean, it might be unusual, but that could still happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So kids may be super popular in this classroom, or is getting, has a great connection with the speech path, or. Those are the decisions we make that are real, that we really carefully make those decisions.
Yeah, I just, thank you, I just wanted to be clear for everybody that, you know, on these court forms, it says sending district and receiving district. Um, you know, I have seen some districts, you know, dispute. Um, whether they were the sending or receiving, and I think it can get complicated when there's guardianships versus fostering, um. So there's different types of placement, um, like with grandparents taking over a child and whatnot, but. Um, I, like, like you guys said, I think this is very few and far between for placements, but thank you for the description there.
My pleasure. So the next is court placements. And again, it works along that least restrictive continuum. Um. These are often residential placements, because the court is removing, for some reason or other, the courts are removing the child from them. And placing them in a different place, and there's places around the state, special schools around the state where. Where these students attend. And we stay with that student and make sure that the program is extremely strict. So even if a student is placed by the court, or, you know, sometimes kids are naughty, and they get adjudicated, they get in trouble. And the court has to intervene, we stay right with them in terms of their education, they're still our student. We go to court, we partner with the family, we make sure that that student does not want to do this, so.
And to clarify, in a situation like that, it's still the same players that are making the decision, um, as in, in all steps.
Yes, same players, yeah, we, maybe not the same people, but the same rules.
The same rules, yes, yeah.
So we're, we're, we're keeping a, keeping some separation between specific cases and specific dollars, because I know we're in the middle of budget. But the one, the one content, uh, the one. Observation that I might make is that in the realm of corridor replacements. Is one of the few places where our costs might be limited. And that's if the court places code is. Four oh two students, if they're, if they're, if they're identified as a code, if their code is a four oh two, because the court has ordered the placement. Uh, there's a, there's a cap that right now lands us in the. Sixty thousand dollar range, there's a cap on expenditures for that student's schooling. And beyond the cap, the state picks up the cost of it. Um, and it's, it's a unique scenario, because they pick up the cost right now, meaning we pay the bill up until the limit, and after that. Bills go to the state, and the State Department of Education. And the State Department of Education flips the bill. Um, unless there's another department involved, I don't know how that goes, I just don't, on a four oh two, we pay to some certain limit. And so to the extent that we know we have a four oh two student, we can budget for the limit, because presumably, we would, I, they would see it coming if there were to be a status change, which would be going to have a different placement and own a greater share of the cost.
And essentially, that's just because, once the court steps in that way, the state of New Hampshire is now, is now accepting responsibility for the student, right? And so, and that therefore they also accept a, a, a larger portion of financial responsibility. And so, point of clarity, these are kids with I E Ps. We're talking about, these are all I E Ps, right? Every single, in this case, we're talking exclusively I E P, there are other arrangements we have kids, correct, and all that. Um, but this is I E P students, yeah.
That's a, that's a.
Well, it's good to bring it back.
It's right, it brings back, they adjust the identity. Um. So, um, so the next one is.
I'm sorry, can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Sure, definitely.
Is that, I mean, is that really true though? Because I mean, the court, the court does order children, and I've seen children that, you know, don't necessarily need an I E P, they're highly intelligent, they just have severe behavioral issues. You know, they maybe probably should have had a five oh four, could have a five oh four for behavior, but for whatever reason, they don't, and then they're in placement. Um, so you're saying on those cases, there's no cap if the court orders the state, the city to pay for the education for those students?
So I don't know what in terms of the, so it's a non, let's say a non I E P student, wait on.
Yeah.
Non I E P student, uh, who ends up being placed somewhere near us. Um, and I don't know if that student ends up becoming seen as a resident or as a non-resident that does not have the tuition because of.
I know the school counselors would work together, you know, for regular ed student, but so I guess I would say, it's important to go back to what we're talking about here, are I E P.
Given.
I E P students, that's a given, and as a result, they have federally mandated services identified in the individualized education program, they're I E P. And so when, when for any of these reasons, the student's schooling elsewhere, we still have responsibility under these definitions of the government, we still have responsibility for the I E P and the services it provides. In a case where a student is not uncovered by an I E P, is not identified in need of specialized services, and they, for whatever reason, in this case, a court decision of placement, uh, placed elsewhere, I think some of those continue to fall under a foster care or similar to foster care arrangement, where because we are the district of residents of record, if I can add another preposition, cases like one spouse, one parent has passed, the other parent becomes, um, incarcerated, but, but they were living here when they became incarcerated. That student that is grounded here, even though they end up in a place somewhere else, we might pay the tuition. Regular ed tuition, no specialized services, we might be paying that. But in, in more cases than not, if there are things that lead that student to be placed elsewhere, in my experience, they, if they don't have that tie to residence here, if mom and dad didn't live here, if they were, you know, if they were, uh, transient when they came through, or they were in transition, they end up the responsibility of some district where they become resident. And again, foster care and things like that tie them back, and some that were paid. Um, but boy, I don't, I can't remember a corridor replacement of some sort that I ever had heard about, talked about, or paid for if there wasn't an I E P involved. So if students.
Yeah, I guess, I, I, I don't want to get, I don't want to get too confusing here, I just, I don't want to get too confusing here. I mean, this is covering all, I just want to be clear, this is covering all of our kids. This slideshow and this presentation is covering all of our out of district placements, whether they have I E Ps or not, but it, it seems as though.
No, just be, just be clear, there, there, this, yeah, this is, ten of this is exclusively to cover students who are, have I E Ps, who are in and out of district placements, and what are the different ways in which they could arrive at a, at a, uh, out of district placement. And ones that Rick was going through so far are things that are least likely to happen. Um, where a student would, would ultimately end up being placed in a out of district placement. Um, and then would be moving next to the ones that are, uh, the most frequent, which is a district placed students.
But, um, can I just ask a final question here? Um, the out of district tuition, that's one sixty five on our bu- our budget sheet here, that encompasses all students, whether they ha- that are out of district, correct? Whether they have an I E P or don't have an I E P?
There, there. I, I'm not aware, other than, other than a small allowance for uh, a student who attends, uh, a career and tech education program in another community, because we don't offer it. The classic has been, in my experience, cosmetology is a strong program in Dover, but we don't have it in Portsmouth. So a student that needed that program, wanted that program, we might pay a small tuition of a thousand, twelve hundred dollars, something like that a year, for them to go to Dover for that program, but other than that, I'm not aware of any students who are out of district and are the financial responsibility of Portsmouth. But I just don't know that we have it.
And also I see, um, in regards to the one sixty five, that is under the special education budget section, so that covers special ed.
Just. But you're saying if there were, it would land in that.
That, I, I, I inherited when I got here that there is one account, it's got five brand in it, I think. And that's for bad like C T E.
Okay.
Um, it's a pain every year, because if there's actual costs in there, I gotta tease it out for all of my reports, because it's not a special ed expenditure.
Yeah.
Um, but yes, that would land there. If we actually had, though, like a full, a full on, I gotta pay for a kid and it's twenty, twenty grand to send them to somewhere, I would put that, assuming it's a regular ed student without an I E P, I would have to find an account or create an account in the regular portion of the budget, so that I wasn't claiming that tuition as a special ed related cost for all the state reporting. That's the biggest, I mean, I, it's a, you know, it's still a Portsmouth dollar if you're spending money for a regular ed student rather than an identified student, but from a reporting state.
Yeah, I guess from my ex, sorry, I guess from my experience in Manchester, you know, there's children that have behavioral issues that don't have I E Ps, that go out of district, so I just wanted to be clear what we're talking about, whether there is another category there, so I appreciate that clarification.
So the next.
Uh.
No, we didn't.
No.
You started.
So D H H S, this, so it's important to dis- to distinguish the Department of Health and Human Services from the Department of Education. So this is where a student is placed through the Department of Health and Human Services, because there's significant challenges. So school could be fine, could be okay, could, you know, not be the greatest. But school is not the primary music, it's things outside of school. And many of our students have challenges. D H S in extreme circumstances will step in or try to. And they do an assessment through the Department of Health and Human Services. And then if there's four levels, if a family is deemed to be in level three or four, then the student would qualify for a placement outside of his area. And then it wouldn't be a school placement though, because this is a whole base movement. But we would still work to make sure that the student is also the least restrictive education itself. So it would still apply, the L R E still applies. But it's not really a place, and it's not the department, that it's something outside of instructional sense that's moving this child to another location.
But we pay for it.
No, we actually don't. That, that's a really good point, Nancy, we, that's why this is interesting. Because right now, we do not fund that if our student is successful in our school. So if our si- student is successful at, say, the high school, and there's a lot of problems at home, if D H H S moved that student to, say, sometimes Connecticut, if that student can receive a faith in our school, then we don't pay them.
Now, again, these three, these three, all these three, these are reasonably in for them.
Right.
Yeah, that's about a third of, and the district place, which is the.
So you're talking about one percent of our students, first of all, in all out of district placements, less than one percent of students. Then inside of them, these first three categories together are one third of that, less than one percent.
Yeah.
Is there a, um, sorry? I got a question, I guess I just wonder in the future, as this be- begins, begins to become a bigger thing, because my understanding is um, D H H S through the Department of Behavioral Health has created a new program, um, and whatnot, not to get into further detail, but, um, it's supposed to be more helpful for families to build an access. Um, placement if needed for behavioral needs and et cetera, et cetera. Um, I assume that this is, this is one of the programs you're talking about in, in this, and so I, what I'm asking, I guess, is, is there a way to show in the budget in the future, if we have a kid that's still considered our kid, but the state's paying for the kid to go elsewhere, you know, that we still have a kid, so we still need funds, you know, uh, I guess, is there a way to account for those kids to show? We still have a kid, but we're kind of getting this deduction because the state is paying this child's tuition. Would that make sense at all? And I'm not, like, I guess I'm just wondering.
What you mean, and right now, we actually don't have any students that would fall in this category. Whereas all, all the students that we have placed weren't with us, were already in out of district placements. So those students, we would, we are responsible for. But in the rare circumstance, a student was moved from his own home and was doing well in school, then we wouldn't be on the financial. Because we were able to provide that state here.
Would they still be considered part of our school district?
If.
If they were moved from the D H H S?
Yeah, well, when they returned, yes.
When they returned, okay.
That, see, that, this is, that's a good point, because it's not a department of ed placement, so it's really a unilateral placement that the family makes an agreement with D H H S.
Okay.
And the department of that is not involved.
So they're not involved, we, we have no financial, um, we don't have to pay financially. Um, when they go to the other, other school district, they're considered as that school district with the potential of coming back to us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So it would be like any student whose family, uh, moved out of the country for a year, but then came back. That student went to another school district, they're no longer our responsibility, they move back and they're back our, and they're back in our school district, okay?
Just like it'd be unilateral, if mom and dad took the child and went to Europe for a year or whatever.
Exactly.
Yeah, it was, that's. And this is a new thing, like, this is within the last couple of years, the Department of Ed is doing this. I think it's a good thing, uh, but there's cakes to work out, sometimes students come back. And structurally, they're on target, sometimes they come back and they're not where they want, so we're, we're really working with, as a state, the directors are working with the D O E to, to work the cakes out with this. But I do like the fact that it's another avenue to help in New Hampshire. Um. And if they got, one more important, important part with D H H S is its option. Even though a family qualifies as a tier three or tier four for placement, families can legally just say, no, thank you, we're done, we, we no longer want the state in our life. See, and they have every right to do. And then the school district just has to figure out what hap- what happens next. So we're always there with the kid, really, no matter what.
I just, um, I, sorry, I just wanted to say, I don't know that all the school board members know what the tier system is for placement, and I think that would actually be a really good description to give of what the tier system is, and maybe how that works and how a child gets placed in a different tier, because I think that's super informative. Um, but I would think of this D H H S program similar to private school. Um, it's usually, like, the way I've seen it work, in the very few instances as it's gotten going, is it's more of like a three month program where they evaluate the child, put the child in the placement. Um, the placement does a, a s- a serious psych eval to see if the child needs continued placement or not. Um, but it's more of a temporary type of situation, so there is a high likelihood that the child would then be back in the school afterwards. But yeah, if you could describe those tiers, that would be awesome, because I think that would give a really good idea for what placement actually looks like.
So, um, that's Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Yeah, Liz, so are you, are you referring to the tiers within D H H S or the, the t- the continuum of placements? That's what I'm not sure.
Um, I was referring to tiers, so like, for example, like, the Chase Homes, what, like, tier one, tier two? Um, there's different placements, um, within the state, and, you know, for, like, for example, you know, there's not like a tier five in New Hampshire right now, which is the highest need, if a kid gets a tier five, they have to go out of, they tend to go out of state, like, there's places in Florida, Tennessee, and we're moving kids, and it's usually based on behavioral issues and a culmination of things, and there's an assessment that takes place. Um, I know that the school does a different assessment, or the Department of Ed does a different assessment than D H H S or D C Y F does. Um, but similar, I would think. Um, but each, each out of placement school has a certain tier level, and so, you know, obviously, the financial cost probably goes up by the tier two.
Yeah, that's a good point, Elizabeth, so in terms of the tiers, because it's new and through D H H S, I, I'm familiar with tier three and tier four. Where a student would go to a placement, tier three would be, you know, s- you know, or tier four would be maybe be further away from their home, because they have more specialized needs. Honestly, Elizabeth, I don't know, I don't know about tier one and tier two, because it's a whole intervention in the school district, at least at my level, it's not always privy to tier one and tier two, so I, I don't think I can describe those. But you, it sounds like you know a lot about, she knows a lot about, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was like places like the Chase Home, it's more residential, less, um, educational for the, the lower tiers, but I don't know, I didn't know if that would be helpful for everybody to understand that, as far as placements go, the school does a certain um, assessment, and D H H S also does a, a certain assessment to evaluate what tier a child needs, and then they find a residential placement based on that tier. Um, and obviously, the cost is dependent, similar with restrictions and whatnot for what the child needs.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
So I was gonna say, one really quick, and then we'll move to the district placements, which would be like the bulk of our, the ones that students that we have. Uh, I think, you know, as we're talking about this, I think you can understand the deep complexity of all of these, and how you have to have specialized staff who, uh, have a whole bunch of training and background and this type of stuff. You have, we have ongoing, with some, with these types of cases, we very often have ongoing communication with an attorney who specializes in state around these sorts of questions at the same time. So, I mean, all of these things in the pursuit of ethically doing what we need to do for all kids, can, the bill can add up, uh, in terms of making sure we're, we are staffed ourselves, and then we are pulling in the expertise we need to help navigate all this, uh, stuff, because even Rick, with all of Rick's experience, you know, you, you, you've only dealt with some of these a couple of times, you know, and so, uh, which is not, not uncommon. So just something to think about as we think about budgeting and our ethical responsibilities to students that, that it can cost, uh, in order to make that.
And it is a lot of people that really help make this happen too, like, just getting on the phone and saying, we gotta get a bus to Dover, because the student has been placed or something could happen, so just a lot of, I guess, social work to make.
Yes.
Okay, to keep this moving, I'm gonna ask people to raise their hands, okay? And the Zoom people, please raise your hands too, um, just so we can keep this moving, Zach, can you keep your eye on?
Uh, yes, I should, that's a good.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Lisa, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to clarify, these placements that we were just talking about, we don't have any right now.
The D H H S. D H H S, no.
We do not.
Okay, I just, so we're talking about the budget, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that, that was all, no question.
Okay, Rick, can we move on?
Yes. So district placed, all right, so these would be students that, again, this is about two thirds of the category, these would be students who, um, have very exceptional instructional needs. So these would be students with, um, I wrote down some of the, some of the examples of. So these would be students with, um, I wrote down some of the, some of the examples of. Goals, instructional goals that they would be working on. Things like maintaining a safe body or maintaining safety around adults and peers. Or chewing food, or eye gaze and responding to stimuli like yes and no, using eye gaze to do that. Head control for four minutes during an instructional task. So these are just some general examples of students with highly exceptional needs. Not just cognitive needs, but also motor needs in terms of ambulatory needs and also. Eyes and mouth and everything that you would, you know, that you use your body for. Um. And those are typically the students that are district placed, because we have trouble meeting their instructional needs in the school. Um, and, uh, again, we're always right there with the student, monitoring their, their progress, making sure they have a rigorous, the least restrictive curriculum. And also when the time is right, moving them back to our school. That is so, so. And that is actively going on every day. We're monitoring that progress and. Always, the goal is to get kids back to us. So, those are district place students. Here's some numbers. Maybe I should have led with this, um, but. You know, it gives you a good idea of where Portsmouth stands in terms of serving your students that live here. Um. You know, I came, I live in Keene, I have a home in Keene. I came from Keene, I was there for seven years and my kids went through that school system. And I was part of that fifty-two. Keene is only, I think, a thousand people larger than Portsmouth. It's very similar. Terms of town size, but the demographics are very different. So, I guess the biggest takeaway from this slide for me is that nineteen is a load. The out of district students with PSD is, is, is healthy. And, yeah.
This is, cause again, because the goal is.
Keeping our kids in our.
In the most typical situation.
We want our kids in Little Harbor. We want our kids at our high school. We want our kids in the middle school. And all of our, and all of our elementary schools.
And, and that's not driven, I think it's really important to, with people, I mean, that, those conversations at those tables are not driven by. Um, you know, um, they're not a, we wanna be cheap. About what we're offering students is really driven by what is the least restrictive way of providing the most typical education that's possible.
So big financial driver, but the money doesn't come up.
Yeah, see, a bit, a bit.
I have never. Yeah, sat at an IEP team meeting, talked about placing of a student or what I, I know status, no standing. It's not a part. I wait with bated breath sometimes to find out what the place and decision was and what the related cost may be and how to look at it. Um, I, I don't mean to make fun, but I, you know, it's just not, well, when I first started a couple of decades ago, I was like, alright. So when do I get to all these meetings? And they laughed at me.
They're huge drivers financially.
They're financial drivers, but it's not, that's not, that's not what's being discussed at the table. That's not the. And I think the other thing I don't wanna miss the opportunity to comment on is fluidity, because even, as you talked about those first three categories. You could tell they were things that don't always stay static. They are changing dynamics. And so one of the things about our budgets are, are that they're impacted by the fluidity of this. And even though this is three quarters of a percent of our student body. And we said two thirds of that are district placed, so they're, half of one percent of our student population is in this category. That number even has changed from a couple of days before Christmas when, when Rick did his first draft of presentation. And this weekend, this weekend when we updated it, the numbers changed already.
Ethan, what are you doing?
Which, by the way, I don't have the right necessarily number as a budget, but I never do, because it's always changing before you can get through this. Eight month, nine month long process of budget.
Sorry, go ahead. I did not, that's, that's, that's.
Um, Matt.
Brian.
Byron, would you like to say something, Byron?
Yeah, I had a question about the numbers. Um, did we see any sort of, um, uh. Big change in those numbers, as a percentages, like during the pandemic? I know we're not entirely out of the pandemic at this point. Or we are, but I mean, just sort of like maybe the aftershocks of it and whatnot. I'm interested just is if there's big changes in those numbers over those COVID years.
You know, and, well, we, the next slide maybe might help with that a little bit. Maybe not, though.
Hey, it doesn't go, we don't, we're not going back five years.
But you can go back and look, but you won't find it to be measurably, it's been north of fourteen in the five years I've been here. I think the one thing you and I were talking about earlier was it's the severity of the cases. Which maybe could be attributed to some, in, in some cases to, uh, the pandemic and the dynamics of, you know, the kids faced. But the severity of the needs, the, the demands on placements seems to have ticked up. Um, and cost has followed it. Yep.
Um, can I just say something? So if I look at number one, six, five of our OOD, the OOD tuition, and you're telling me it's less than one percent of our students. But we're spending three million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars on that, less than one percent. Okay. Just so that kind of puts it into perspective.
Absolutely. That's why we're having, that's why we're.
Right, exactly. And that's a lot of money to spend on less than one percent of our student population, but obviously. It's a segment of our population that we need to spend that money. Okay.
And we're legally obligated federally to provide the services.
Let's do Tish and then Matt. Who do you have?
Liz Barrett.
Who?
Liz Barrett.
Okay, Tish.
Okay, so in regard to that, uh, three point three million that, um, Nancy just brought up. Or three point eight, actually, for upcoming. That includes tuition? Does that include busing and any other? So that's the whole gamut of everything to. Place a student elsewhere.
Almost.
Almost.
It, it doesn't specifically take into account his time.
Right.
Or the case managers that are on staff.
So this is, this is just for the individual student for going.
The external costs.
The external costs.
Busing, the tuition and.
Any.
And any services, because some of them, some of the same services they might get here, OT, speech.
Things like that.
There might be separate bills. Sometimes it's included in the tuition, sometimes it's spelled out, but it's all in there for that population.
Um, and the other thing I just wanted to point out, because I'm very familiar. With this, because I've worked in a school like that and I've sat in IEP meetings as well. That, and as you just said, it's not just the, what's best for the student. There's federal laws that have to be followed. That's why the specialists are needed, um, and that's why the cost is so high, that, that there is federal laws. We absolutely have to follow. No ifs, ands, or buts about it.
Thank you, Tish. Uh, Liz?
Yeah, I had a similar question to Byron, because when I was looking at the summary report that you, that Nathan kindly gave us that showed us. You know, the budget from twenty-two, the actual twenty-two. Um, then the twenty-three budget and then actual twenty-three, I guess, you know, it, it. When you look at it, the actual from twenty-two was two point nine million, and now we have a jump. To add another million, um, in the course of, um, I guess this would be three years. Um, and so. That is a bit concerning to me. And so, you know, I'm looking back at, you know, obviously we have the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted. And the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed. It would be interesting to know if there's any clear indicator of what. Where that jump came from. I know that, that, you know, everybody's tuition's dependent and, and whatnot. You know, I see some placements are. You know, two hundred and ninety thousand, and then I see a placement that's ten thousand. Um. But I don't see any of these sixty thousand dollar caps that, uh, Nathan was talking about either. So I guess. I guess I'm curious if, if we were to look back, I mean, maybe I can pull out a budget binder from twenty-two, I think. Think I was part of the board, but then in, in C, but it'd be interesting to see where that million dollars. Has been pulled from. I don't know if to, the, uh, transportation costs have gone up. You'd be, I don't know what the tuition and fees support for transfer, if that's just for the, um. At a, when a kid goes to another school, if that's the cost that we're paying for the other school. Um, but I'm curious, because a million dollars over the course of three years. Um, is a lot of money and, and it doesn't seem like the numbers have changed. You know, twenty-two, we actually had more kids, twenty-two kids or, or eighteen kids, around the same number of kids. So. I mean, obviously prices have increased, but by a million dollars seems like a lot. So it'd be interesting to see. Where that's coming from. And I guess my question is, why don't I see any of these sixty thousand dollar caps on any of these placements?
So if you go to the second page of one sixty-five, outside of one sixty-five, the out of district tuition. We go to the second page and you look at the high school line, which is, it'd be, it starts about halfway down the page. You'll see placement eleven and placement nine that are caught, that are noted as four oh two caps.
Oh, I see.
Budgeted at fifty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars each.
Okay.
And so I guess the challenge is, the challenge is, um.
Why can't we get these other, get these other kids into a cap?
Cause they were court ordered. They were, they're, they're in the juvenile system. So, I mean, I, I guess, you know, that's. I'm not necessarily one to encourage.
No, I know, but I guess I've seen litigation around it and I think it's interesting. I think it's an emerging area, but. I have seen some schools start to push back on some of these costs and whether the state should pick them up or not. So. Uh, you know, I guess my challenger question maybe going forward would be. From a legal perspective, whether we could start challenging some of these three hundred thousand dollar costs. And in getting the state to pick them up and, um, I, you know, I think there might be some interesting litigation around that.
Yeah, Tiffany, Betty.
Yes.
Cat aid, maybe another mechanism too to talk about. Yeah, so, so I guess, um. Where, where did you get, I love a lot of, like, the financial formula stuff. Okay, good. So maybe now, I can, so there's a. The challenge is, the challenge is that tomorrow, a student may move into the district. Mom and dad may buy a home and that student may, in an IEP already pre-existing. Be placed in an out of district residential setting that just, that costs on an annual basis, four hundred thousand dollars. And I'm not a lawyer, but my experience says that those are not, I, I, you don't just. I'm not gonna sue my way out of that, like it's the way the law is written. The student is entitled, they become residents, we are the resident district, it becomes our responsibility. I think one of the things that I can tell you is with all best intentions. With all best intentions, we went, we spent over budget in this category by six hundred and twenty thousand last year. We spent, we overspent by three hundred and fifty-one thousand the previous year and by two hundred and seventy thousand the year before that. In those same years, Liz is right, when she made a comment about the costs. In those same years, we've seen increases of. How did I not put that on this page? We've seen increases of two hundred and then three twenty and then. Four ninety-six last year, and now to get to this year, and four eighty-seven, I think, is in the book. Is what we're increasing or something like that for next year across the spectrum. And, and part of that is simply because, um, the costs are rising. The experiences that we've had, can't find bus drivers, can't find drivers in seats. Um, the, the places that we go to get our services, they can't find paras, they're struggling to find specialists. We gave a six percent bump to salaries across the district to be competitive in the market. They're not bound by collective bargaining agreements and they're not bound by tax limitations. So these for-profit ventures that are providing services, they bumped. And they didn't bump six, they bumped more and their costs have risen. As I look at it, if I take the total costs, um, for the, for the externment, I, I averaged it out. We've seen since twenty-one, we saw nine point seven percent on the per pupil. Like again, one kid might be fifty thousand and another kid might be four hundred thousand, but they, per pupil was about a hundred and six. And then it was a hundred and fourteen, which is an eight percent jump. And then it was a hundred and twenty-five. Uh, this year we're budgeted for about a hundred and twenty-five, that's a nine percent. And next year, the budget holds about a hundred and thirty-four thousand. Per pupil in these, um, in this category.
In the less than one percent.
In, in the less than one percent. And, and some of them are much more, much higher than that. But again, just trying to average it out, it's, um. Yeah, so the costs are rising. The costs are rising in ways that are hard for us to chase, because we have to provide ethically. The right services, we find the right fit for the students.
Transportation's and on off insurance has gone up.
Yeah, but I do wanna make sure that I talk about, cause Rick was just suggesting it. We do see, from the department, from the New Hampshire Department of Education. There is a program that generates a revenue in the subsequent year. Catastrophic aid. Remember, we don't have revenues, like you guys don't. If I were sitting over the last twenty years with other districts that I've worked with, we'd be talking about offsets. Oh, but we can do this, because we're gonna get some of that and that offsets it and it'll. We don't, the tuition revenues to go to the city, that, you know, we, we're a department and we have a budget of spending. We don't really have. I mean, I'm responsible for making sure that we generate enough tuition revenue to satisfy what I told them we would.
Right, the city's need.
Tuition, tuitions in this case are coming from SA fifty, our neighbors who tuition their kids in. That's the second largest. Revenue source in the state, in the city's, uh, spending pa- pattern. They get, uh, property tax and then they get tuition. So it's important and, and, and cat aid is important too, but. They don't come into our donor fund to offset this budget. So, but what I can tell you is that there's a graduated scale. By which the state expects us to, for the longest run, right? We own the first. The state has an average per pupil cost each year that it calculates. Pick that number and call it. Seventeen, fifteen, seventeen thousand. Call it fifteen, because it's easy numbers. We, we are responsible for paying the first three and a half times that amount. So forty-five and change, it's into the fifties. So the first fifty something grand is our cost. Never gonna recover that. Then up to ten times that number, so up to a hundred and fifty thousand, we split it with the state. Beyond that ten times, beyond a hundred and fifty thousand, they should reimburse us. But that money, when it comes as a revenue to the city, comes next year. So you have to budget for the total amount and you have to spend the total amount. But if you were talking about relief, released or relief to your taxpayers, some of that does come back to us. And what I will tell you is, every July, there's an extensive process that Rick and his team go through to make application for the catastroph. They used to call it catastrophic aid, because it's the highest cost case, because it's catastrophic, you know, financial. The districts, it can have an enormous impact on.
They, they renamed it now, the last two or three, four years, some of it, renamed it special aid. But it, it's a state program. And they, the state goes through the application, they go through with the, I can tell them the pencil, but when they disallow, 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 disallow.
We chase every.
They reimburse a dollar. They, they do a great job and they chop it up. But again, it's only for a certain percentage of, so some of that does come back. But it's, but it doesn't, it doesn't relieve us of the responsibility of having a budget for the fullest amount that we have to spend. Cause that revenue comes in the subsequent year.
Okay, thank you. That's a good explanation.
Nancy, I have another question.
Brian. Liz, go ahead.
Um, I, I, a couple of questions. As far as our Rye kids or, or kids from, um, you know, Greenland, Newington, Rye. That come to Portsmouth High School, um, are they paying their own out of district tuition? Like if the kid comes here. And then we decide that the child needs out of district, uh, needs out of district placement. Um, are those towns part of that discussion in picking up the cost? Like, we're not seeing that cost here, are we?
Right, no, our, our area agreement for tuition covers all of the services, regular ed and special ed, that we can cover in the buildings with our staff. But out of district placements are the cost of the home district, whether it's Greenland or Rye or Newington or Castle. So that's, you're correct. It's, they, they are not in this population, because they're, they're district.
But just to be clear.
Okay.
If they had, yeah, they had, if you were, uh, learning disabled students from Rye. Didn't require an out of district placement, that you were receiving special ed services here, here. It's part of your, it's part of the tuition, part of our agreement with SA.
Correct.
That builds into the tuition are those, those services you receive with us that are special ed, but they are not out of district.
And Rye pays.
Okay.
Well, the in-house, the in-house services, Rye pays for, it builds it into his tuition. The, if the, if a Rye student was to go to a, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar out of district placement in Rye.
And then, um, the, the, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, you know, the state is contracting. And putting caps on, on some of these, um, residential placements. But when I'm looking at, you know, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year and two hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. Which would equate to, you know, quick math, I guess, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. Which would equate to, you know, quick math, I guess, twenty to twenty five thousand dollars a month. You know, I think about nursing homes, I think about other facilities that are residential placements. I mean, this cost is huge and it seems huge to the taxpayer or anybody to have to pay. A child's tuition that's three hundred thousand dollars, I understand there's a need there, but I guess I'm wondering. Is there any negotiating that's going on with these contracts? And, you know, it does, this doesn't seem like a, a very well negotiated contract by the state, if it is a cap on the state. I know we don't wanna get into individual, um, things, but I guess is, is there any negotiating that the school district could do? For these or, um, that the, the Department of Ed could do, like what is the Department of Ed's cap if it's not? Two hundred and ninety thousand?
So the Department of Ed sets all the rates for all the schools. And some schools are licensed for students with higher, more unique needs than others. Do you follow me? And those schools tend to charge more, um, but the DOE sets all those tuition rates. We don't do that and I guess they negotiate with all of those schools collabor, I'm not sure how they come up with those. But it's, you know, I trust that the government is setting those rates and not.
I mean, I don't know that I trusted at this point, I don't, I mean, is there, is there ever an idea that we could put a. That we could put a cap on what we're willing to pay for an out of district tuition, because I mean. You know, uh, this could send a kid to college however many times, looking at this, I mean, I understand that there's a need, but. You know, two hundred and ninety thousand, I mean. You know, that's somebody's income.
So we're. I know we're trying to stay general, right, but I guess, remember that there are tuitions. Some tuitions are all inclusive, some are more of an a la carte menu. And we don't choose the a la carte, I just mean there are additional fees for speech and language pathology services and occupational therapy and physical therapy services. And, and so I have seen cases where not only was there tuition. But there was, uh, you know, residential placement, which is more expensive because there's housing and food and all of that, um. There were, there was additionally twenty four hour support, meaning, you know, we provide a paraprofessional. A pararete to work with students for six and a half hours, seven hours during the day. They provided during all waking hours, paras providing one-to-one support. Not to mention all of the, all of the other professionals who are in and out doing case management and, and, and specialized services. So by the time you get done taking that up, it's not just about, wow, you paid tuition to go to school, because there were. There was so much additional care and service being rendered to help the student. Take advantage of and access curriculum and instruction and move their, the, the, move the, yeah. Move the meter forward. And so it's hard, because even at the same placement, in some of these placements, one child might cost more than another, because their specific needs are different. Their IP services as prescribed are different, most costs look different, I, I, I don't wanna minimize all that this stuff's expensive. Especially when you're talking about less than twenty students, but it's. Um, we're playing, but we're playing by the rules, playing by the numbers to do the best we can for all of our students. And, uh, and it's fairly prescriptive, there isn't really. Uh, there, there's not, I've never known of a mechanism where I can jump in, again, I don't get to go to the table. I also don't get to jump in and tell X, Y, Z placement in, in Massachusetts.
We'll give you seventy five percent.
I give you seventy five percent of that, right, I.
No, I know, but I, I think that.
Other people have questions, you just asked two questions, let's let others ask.
Yeah, but I, I think this is a really important issue, Nancy, these are huge budget items, Nancy.
Brian, you're on.
Yeah, so, um. One of the things that would might be interesting and kind of help is if we actually mobilize numbers. Eight dollars from a student, like you said, you know, said one thirty four across these other districts, cause I think that would help. Us understand and really spending more per pupil than not. Cause I know, I know we have the numbers and, and we get, uh, actual dollars, I think that would help the discussion. The other thing that I'm getting from this is, if zero control. This is an information session of like how we got here, why, why the numbers are that they are. I don't think there's any discussion on control of the numbers, unless I'm missing. So, I mean, you, I think, by lo- by law, I think laws are. We're gonna take care of, uh, everybody who else needs, uh. You, there was some restriction, I mean, there was a process, the, the, I mean, the law is the process, there's steps you have to take. There's people with certain expertise at the table, you need to include parents, you need to, you know, so there's a process that is prescribed. Some elements of that pros- pro- process are very mechanical, like you, there's a set of tasks we're gonna run. And those are gonna lead to certain conclusions about what a student needs and then you're gonna, you know, but there are, in each of those little steps. We also have human beings at the table who are making some decisions, they're interpreting test results, they are, are trying to determine. You know, within a, a ca- a catch area of ours, what other resources are, are available to us, the proper resources to align with the student. We're not positioned to be like, yeah, we just don't feel like, we can pay half of what this, you know, we can't do that, and Liz, I know Liz is saying that. But we don't have those types of choices available to us, but, you know, the quality of the expertise we have at the table. There's a lot of decision-making inside of that process that might just be slight variances, those slight variances can lead to. Unique outcomes that might be more expensive, uh, that might be, uh. You know, can, can lead to conflict between us and parents about what do we think the appropriate placement is? Uh, what do we think the least restricted environment is, um, what a parent might feel is the most people, the least restricted environment. So there is some wiggle in there, because it's humans at the table, but a lot of the pieces of it are prescribed and boxed in basically. But it seems like the wiggle would be small margins, like, I mean, these big placements, I don't think you're, think you're probably. The fact that we have to do it, and I would think the other piece that would help is again, the dollar per pupil. I guess other places, because that would say we're, we're in line or we're not, and it would actually explain the margin. Do, like, to what extent is that type of data available? People, I don't know if placements are available.
We can chase that out, like, I just imagine. You know, if we look, Ro- Rochester has seven, we have nineteen, I can only imagine what the difference is. We, I don't know what that is, we can just, I think that's what you're asking, is some sort of.
I mean, you've got Keely, Parker, Rochester, Pepperdug, feel like we could chase them.
Yeah, I mean, and so especially this, even, even if we started, even if we were forced to be as raw as or as limited as, what's the budget? Versus the headcount, to come up with a per pupil, I mean, just to be able to.
Some ballpark.
Some, some ballpark, I think, and say. Yeah, we, we can work on that, Nathan.
Okay, we have Pip, now we have Liz.
Thanks, I actually have three questions, um, the first is for Nathan, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, um. This sheet, right, so when it says placement and a number, is that the location, is the number referring to the location? Because I notice there's someone saying two students.
Yeah, so.
It's not the student.
So, so I have another version of this, right? I don't have a version that has student names, because I don't get the student names, but I get a placeholder for the student. And then I get the actual school or the placement name, location, et cetera. But because it's such a small sample, a small size, I have over the last three or four years taken out. Names of particular sites. And, and instead I put in placement, and I've used a number. Because I wanted you to be able to tie the placement number in tuition, the placement number in the transportation line, which is earlier in the. That way you can say, okay, so here's placement ten, it costs this much for the tuition services and back here, placement ten, that's busing costs, that's not.
Okay, or are they the same for year to year or not?
No, they change each year, because I have.
I thought that night, so. So, okay, so referring to the location. Like, each placement.
Yes, for first location.
Okay, thanks.
Um, the next question I had was that you mentioned that all of the, um. All the schools that we sent kids to are, um. Overseen by the New Hampshire DOE or approved by the New Hampshire DOE, but then you also said that we often sent, or we sometimes send kids out of state to other states. So, is the New Hampshire DOE involved in that at all?
Absolutely, yeah.
Other state, and does that change anything when they go to Maine or Massachusetts?
So, so yes, so this, if it, if the school isn't already approved by New Hampshire. Especially a lot of the border towns, um, use resources in Massachusetts, then the state actually goes to that location and will approve that site. Or not, and we've had that recent, just within this, within this year, um. Usually if it's approved by another state government, our government doesn't have too much other challenge, was a, but challenge with it, but they really do the work to make sure. I thought it'd be a ease of me kind of thing, if it was approved in one state, it's not, they, they do the, they do their due diligence.
Okay, and then I think you sort of alluded to my other question, which was, what is the scenario? And is it included in what we're talking about when parents can either, I think parents can either accept or object to the placement? And if they object, is that, is that, and then choose a school, like a charter school or something, is that then considered? Out of district placement, but, uh, does that fall under umbrella as well?
Do you want to go general, do you wanna start generally with what happens when a team? The member, the school members of the team and the, and the parent disagree about a placement?
Yeah, we can start, we can start there, so we can't build consensus, because we do come to an impasse around placement, and it happens. Um, there's a healthy set of regulations that again, the DOE puts out under. The federal law, the IDEA, for a parent to challenge this. And they go to the Department of Ed, there's a mediation process, there's, it's all spelled out in terms of days and steps. And then essentially we go to Concord, we explain what's going on and then there's a person that makes a binding decision. Um, that's usually how that happens, when there's disagreements.
Okay, so I guess what I'm referring to is maybe simpler. Um, I'll just speak to my personal experience, because I don't know how else to explain it, but I know when we've been. Given a placement or, or that, uh, the other placement's been in district. We've had the opportunity to object to that placement and send our child somewhere else. So that doesn't sound like the same thing, cause I, I know we haven't gone to the DOE to debate it.
So you rejected. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I'm curious, uh, what, like, how often that's allowed and.
It doesn't happen often, but when IEP or a placement is rejected, then it's, it's not. I guess I didn't wanna leave people that we go right to the DOE, we try to really work it out, like. Maybe we have to adjust physical therapy, maybe we have to adjust counseling, or maybe there's a little more time in regular ed. We just really work to build that consensus. And acquiesce to a lot of parent concerns to a point.
And, and then, you know, it's a just, I mean, I think that's, it was where you get back to the human element, and so it's like people are trying to determine, you know. We know we have the initial process that leads to a certain, a certain initial, um, conclusion, which a parent might not agree with. Um, well, and then you have the next process, and then as a school district, then there's a, you know, there's an internal kind of. Uh, wrestling with, is it, do we wanna go to that other process? You know, or do we wanna go back to the table and re-discuss with the same groups of people? Maybe collect some additional data, um, and come to a different, and maybe come to a different conclusion. Um, and, and so that's like one of those, when I'm saying there's these kind of, there are these decision points. That could make a difference in, in placement, it could make a difference in all that type of stuff. Um, and ultimately, so a district in that, in a situation where there was a disagreement with the parent, could say, nope. We just think we're right, we're happy to go to Concord, we're gonna, we're digging in, because we really believe that the, what we're. Uh, the position we have is the correct position, um, and if we have to go through a kind of laborious process, we'll do that. Or, uh, maybe we should go back to the table and have another conversation, that might lead to something else. Uh, and so, I mean, unless I'm, am I mixed character or something in that, Rick?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not as simple as the parents just saying, no, this doesn't work.
No, no, but the school, I mean, but we, but as a school, as a district, you have to, or as an IEP team. As a district, you then have a choice, and it's like ideally, like Rick said, you come to a consensus, and it's like. Everybody walks out and, and is reasonably happy with where we, where we landed, it seems like appropriate in connection with what the students' needs are. Um, and then if, you know, if team, if folks can't come to consensus, then it's like, okay. Here's this other process, and you wanna go to this other thing, and sometimes that's where we end up, yeah.
Was, go, opportunity to call out charter schools and just say.
Yeah, charter school are a bit different.
They're a little bit different, but tell me if I'm wrong, I, from a dollar perspective, there's a small, I say small relative to millions. There's a small placeholder in the budget for services that might need to be provided to students who are attending. Charter, a public charter school, so. Char- charter schools in New Hampshire are publicly chartered, public schools, they're publicly chartered schools, they're not, they're not private schools, and they're not out of district placements. They are open enrollment schools, so if mum and dad wanna take the student and go attend charter school, they can do that, that's not a placement. But the resident district can still and does still provide special ed services to help that child be successful in that, in that school. And again, that doesn't fall under out of district, but someone who got a budget to send some dollars. In the very beginning, when we launched charter schools back in the early aughts, um, under, uh, under the state's initiative to create some publicly chartered schools. Uh, literally, we were seven people, speech and language, you gotta drive to, uh. Cause there's a charter school over there, we've got a child, gotta go provide some services. The charter schools were still just trying to be schools. Today, many of the charter schools have advanced enough so that they hire and maintain special ed staff who can provide these services. And so we end up chipping in and paying our share for the hours of service provided to the students. Who are resident in our towns but are going to school at the charter school, so there's fifty thousand dollars earmarked. There's a contingency against those needs arising, um. Because it's a lot easier than trying to rip a specialist out of one of the schools and say, drive to Dover or wherever the school.
So you're saying we pay for the services?
Yeah.
But we don't pay the tuition?
We don't pay the tuition, but we might pay for the special ed services for a student who had an IEP and, and, you know, when they left and went.
Don't we do that for St. Pat's?
St. Pat's.
Send, oh, the PT to St. Pat's.
You should answer. So St. Pat's is, St. Pat's is, is a little different, it's not an out of district school, it's not a charter school. It's a private religious school, and we do some of that for St. Pat's. So according to the law, a certain amount of money in our grant has to be allocated to. Um, St. Pat's, so we do consult with that, especially. And, yeah, same times too.
Title one services, they get a, they get a piece because they're resident, um, you know, the title one.
Title one, title two, well, they, they have the option to, um, agree to receive funding from title one, title two, title three. Title four, when and if we're allocated any of that money from the state, so it's up to them to decide whether they're, wanna participate or not. And then there's a formula that you calculate based on the number of students that they have that are Portsmouth residents and they get a portion of that.
So, so there's relationships back and forth, we have to actually make the purchases and spend the dollars, though they're just a sub-situte here locally. But they're entitled by law to that if they'd like, so, and it's true with IDEA as well. Um, but we are not, uh, to my knowledge, we also have to provide referral evaluations. We have to, if I, what am I using the right words? We provide evaluation services for referred students there. But we don't evaluate, we determine whether they're eligible as having a disability under the IDEA. But once we determine eligibility, if they want services, they would have to enroll at our school. Typically, they don't, they remain in their private school and know that they have needs and we use some of the grant dollars to help.
Kish.
I have a, um, I just wanna put something into perspective. So someone that is, um, has an IEP that goes to a charter school. Say we're providing, um, speech or physical therapy for them, so we're paying so much to that charter school. However, because that student isn't physically coming to our school, it's not like we're doubling down on it. Because we don't have to hire an additional person or have an additional time, so it's almost like we're not. Spending money we don't have, we would have to spend that money regardless whether that student was going to one of our schools or not.
So in this case, we're not buying textbooks, we're not providing a laptop or, you know, a Chromebook. None of the services that the student would have participated in and partaken in in the district IDP or not, like, none of. None of those are being provided, but to the extent that they have an IDP and there are services that the team believes. Or decides they should continue to receive, we help with that.
So we're not, we're not spending any more than we would have if that student was, say, going to Portsmouth middle school?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Liz.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, um, you know, just caution board members, I guess, from saying, well, this is the law, this is what we have to pay. And, and whatnot, because I think yes and no, um, I'm a little bit concerned with the. yes and no. Um, I'm a little bit concerned with these higher numbers because the law is that we pay for education. I think it's hard when we get into these residential placements and how we go about it. And so I guess I wonder, you know, are we missing? You know, obviously, we can't get into specifics on specific kids, but I guess are we missing the Medicaid reimbursement? You know, could we have gone through the CHINS process, you know, in the future? Is there a better way um to navigate some of these residential placements that are hitting upward to three hundred thousand dollars? Um, in order to have the state pick up the sleeping portion, the residential portion. So in a lot of placements, you know, the state would pick up the the overnight, stay in the night portion and the school picks up the the day school tuition portion. And I've seen, I've seen more and more schools in some cases, put their foot down and say, I'm not going to pay it. Um, and that creates an interesting scenario. And so I I kind of wonder you know, how these things are going to start to play out, especially as these tuitions continue to hit three hundred thousand dollars a year for one child. Um, so I guess I just wonder if there's a game plan for Portsmouth going forward. You know, if we could sort of touch on that a bit and and whether you know, we can start better navigating these or try to navigate them in such a way that we're not getting stuck with the overnight portion of a residential placement.
Okay, thank you, Liz. I think our our administrative team will look into that. I think we have Carrie next.
I think you have two questions. Um, so um first in regards to um uh, it's kind of similar to what Liz was asking about with Medicaid um reimbursement for services. I'm just curious if we're sending someone out of district. Is that, are we billing Medicaid for the applicable services? Or is that done by the school or that they're going to?
We interface with the out of district school to make sure we capture those Medicaid reimbursable dollars.
Okay, um, and this, the other question is not a suggestion, not meant to suggest, it's like somewhat visionary, but um I'm just curious if, uh, you know, I know that a lot of these entities are for-profit entities that develop specialized school placements. And is there ever a role in um our district to like consider like hey, here's this really specific high need area that many of our local districts can't find uh placements for. And Portsmouth School District is going to kind of build this placement as to meet the needs of service area of the service area. Or uh, so I'm just curious if that happens and or if that is just wildly inadvisable.
No, it it ha- it happens and it happened and that's called Lister Academy. Uh, and one example. And so that to, if you think about, and this is just my understanding from talking to people. Um, you know, as Lister grew, there are a lot of surrounding communities, this is at the beginning stages of Lister. A lot of surrounding communities who didn't have a program that could mirror what Lister was providing. And therefore, there was a decent amount of 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 people tuitioning in kids to Lister's. Well, I understand, well over a hun- well over a hun- at the height. And so um and so that, at that time, so the district had created this program, other people saw that, saw. Um, and I'm sure originally the program was probably created because the district had a need. The district started to 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 uh do well and people started having conversations saying, geez, I've got some kids that will benefit from that. And I'd be willing to pay you X amount to have my students go to that program. But then over time, and this is part of the marketplace, what happens is those people that are looking, you're looking at the, you know, tonight we're looking at tuitions unlabeled to weapons and they're going, geez, how are we spending that much money? Where are those kids going? What do you mean we're sending kids up the road to Portsmouth to get these types of programs? Couldn't we do those right here in? Couldn't we do those right here when I cut it? Couldn't we just, you know, and so over time, those places that oh, their own uh programs with some of the same components of what we were offering in Lister. Um, and now it's a much, and Lister's a much smaller program and Lister has evolved in in terms of who the students are that services. But yes, districts do sometimes get in situations where they create those types of programs that people want to tuition, outside folks want to tuition their kids into because you can provide those services. The challenge is um is you are on the hook. Well, if you're gonna, if you, if your approach is, if you build it, they will come. You are on the hook for all the salaries of people that you put into place, you're under CBA contracts that are very difficult to get out of. You also, people are not going to get recruited into things, they don't know what the long-term viability of those programs are. Um, and so you're taking a big risk. So you very often what happens is people build it for their own internal purposes, they catch the wave at the right moment. People want to send in um, send in folks and you go through a certain period of time, a certain uh cycle where you benefit from those tuition dollars you can do stuff. But then eventually, people, people decide they're going to do it themselves. Yeah.
I remember one time we had more out of district kids going to Lister than we had Portsmouth kids and we had a waiting list for Portsmouth kids.
Wow.
So the board, uh, the board, the board got involved and, you know, we changed that, but we were making money on it. We made a lot of money on the Lister Academy for a few years there because we had so many out of district.
Tuitions.
Yes, oh, go ahead. Oh, wait, Lisa.
Um, well, I want to turn things in a slightly different direction because I have some questions about the in district kids in special education. So if there's more O O D questions, I'm happy to wait because I don't want to.
Yeah, yeah, I got one more slide.
Yeah.
So this is, I want to take the opportunity because of the conversation we're just having. Part of the, part of the voice, part of the conversation that we identified over the last few months that brought us to this deep dive tonight was hey, we have all these kids in these out of district placements, can't we just bring a group of them back in? And we'll find the economies of scale and do it cheaper here. So three grade levels, all of that storyline we were talking about earlier, answer that cons- or that question about when Zach just talked about in the, in the grand scheme.
We see two O's, cheaper here, but also these lesser street because they're in their homes.
And they would be less.
Both of those things at the same time, but there are things that make that hard in terms of regulations.
There are really tight regulations around especially specialized elementary programming. So the IDEA says you can only have, I believe it's three years between little kids. So if you think about kindergarten, five, six and seven year olds and then you have grades three, four and five, so you're talking to two programs. Because legally, we, you can't blend those pro- those kids because developmentally, they're so different. They're in the same elementary school, fifth grader is so much different than first.
If if you think most logical in what they're trying to write with, so if you had, let's say you have a behavioral, you're like, I need a behavioral program at my elementary school. Um, what they, what the feds are trying to avoid is you have a K, let's say a K to six elementary school. And you just have a room and your program is a room and this would have been we have to go to high school, you know, it would have been down the end of the hallway.
By the furnace.
By underneath the stairs, you know, like whatever, by the furnace. And it would have been, and that would have been, that would run the gamut from kids who were in kindergarten, the sixth grade, who people thought were behaviorally a problem. And they'd just be down there all day long. Uh, that's where those those regs go in to try to prevent those types of scenarios. It did exist uh in a lot of places. So, but that makes it more challenging to say, geez, I really need, in order for me to hire a behavioral specialist, a psychologist who would be connected to the program, um, sure, skilled pair of professionals, a teacher, both all of these things, I need to now have a cluster of kids in a three grade span in the same building who would warrant all that expense around the program. Uh, and really, I need to know that I can keep that together. I mean, you don't, you're not going to throw together a program for a year, you know, so because you're gonna have to bring most people on board, you gotta cultivate them. Um, you gotta build a program.
Training.
So it's really gonna be like, if you're gonna see like a threat and be like, oh, I think right now this need that we have is something that's going to be continuous for the next eight to ten years. And so we, once you get there, then you're like, okay, we can build something because it makes sense. And we've got enough of those kids to bring back in from these other programs if they are the reason why they're out or similar reasons. But a lot of these kids have very unique and diverse sets of needs and therefore they wouldn't be ones necessarily you can come together and pool in that way that would create an economy scale that we could build that type of structure around. Um, and some of that's, like I said, regulatory in terms of the way in which we can structure those programs.
Yeah, and those, and those regulations I think are good, are very good.
Okay, Rick, do you want to finish your last slide and then Liz, you can have the last question. Then we're gonna move on.
Nancy, I still did have some questions.
Oh, I know, that we're gonna move on to you. Oh, on this, do you have questions? Or do you want to?
You said Liz.
Yeah, Liz has.
I have, I have added district questions.
I'm gonna end up the O D, the out of district and then we're gonna go to you. Okay? All right, go ahead, Rick.
So just to wrap up this, so how, how do we use this information to improve our schools? What Zach just said is we do, we watch the trends, we look, monitor the students. And if we ever see kind of a critical mass or a cluster of students and we have the opportunity to program for those kids, we would certainly work on developing that program and bringing kids back. So we do watch this data closely and the coordinators and I talk about it. And some separate programming could be something in the future. It's our student population will tell us, so that's all I got on out of district for tonight.
Great. All right, Liz, you have the last question.
Yeah, I just, I I have questions about the um, the one sixty-five data sheet here. Um, as far as the transportation cost, my, you know, my aunt, she drives a special ed bus in Maine. You know, she drops two kids here, one kid here, another kid here. Is that happening for the kids in these placements? Um, combining drop-offs? I mean, I don't know how close the placements are in New Hampshire, but.
We work really hard to consolidate the runs as much as we can. Absolutely, that's one of the first things we do.
But it can be challenging depending on where kids are and you also want to be ethical about, like, we don't want to have a student ob- obviously with like a two-hour commute each day to get to their placement because we're dropping off two other kids that aren't anywhere near where their placement is.
They have, these schools have start times, just like we do, and they have the end time, you know, so.
So I mean, is that a conversation? Is that a conversation you guys have at the beginning of the year?
It's ongoing because we're always, every time we bring on another student, it's like, what's our ability to to consolidate routes and find a way to have the least amount of vehicles on the road uh as possible while still serving the needs of kids to get to where they need to go.
Okay, thank you, Liz. Listen, let's move on to the regular ed um special ed question.
Nancy, I have this out of district question though still about are the R G L A support transfer? What is that fund amount? Is that seen in another cost center?
So that, so the R J L A transfer is uh is the general fund support for the Lister program. It's got uh, it's got three legs of support. It gets a piece of tuition dollars coming from S U fifty. It gets our general fund dollars and then it gets out of district or uh private, uh, what do I want to call it? Out of, out of region, if you will, or out of district. It's not S U fifty and it's not Portsmouth. There are, there are paying students, just like there used to be when Nancy, what Nancy was describing. We have students that are, their districts are paying to have them at Lister Academy. And those three elements make up the 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 funding mechanism for Lister Academy.
So what is this transfer amount? What does it say transfer? What does that mean?
We transfer it to the Lister Special Revenue Fund where.
Okay, on that sheet? That'll show up on that data sheet?
On that data sheet.
Okay, and then the tuition and fees support transfer?
Yeah, that's the, that's your, that's a, that's another special revenue program that has a bunch of special ed costs in it. And uh, and that is a transfer that's been there every year to to prompt that up. That's also supported by um Medicaid reimbursement and uh tuition dollars coming across S U fifty.
I guess I'm just concerned that there's, Nancy, Nancy, I'm concerned. Nancy, I'm concerned that there's a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar allotment, but there's nothing underneath it. Nancy. There's no, there's no information about what the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is.
Yeah, it's, so we, we, I'll, I'll put the, we put a new financial report in place. And uh, and your fourth page dropped off because it's trying to clean out the general fund. I'll add that back in and then you can see the, you can see the tuition and fees budget the way we always did um in the new financial format. Uh, but it's a special revenue that has, it's a special revenue fund. It exists, it exists in um, it exists as a, as a holdover from S U fifty tuition bill and we just got done talking a little bit ago about how uh special, special ed costs for all students are a part of um, are all part of the the area agreement. So this, so S U fifty pays a tuition rate, but that tuition rate has historically had three pieces that had a regular piece, a special ed piece and a Lister Academy piece. And um, and they used to actually get three different bills. And so some of our special ed costs are buried in the tuition and fees fund. And in the Lister fund, in this case, Lister's now very separate, tuition fees has some of our pairs. You notice when you look in the book, you see one pair of Marie Calgill at high school. It's because the high school pairs are all in the tuition and fees fund because that was where all of the costs were collected and then they were divvied up based on which kids they were serving. S U fifty kids are our kids. And so we transfer six hundred and fifty thousand every year into that tuition fees fund to help offset the costs of the staff that are there in that tuition fee. So at some point, all of that needs to make its way back into the general fund. Revenue's coming in, expenses coming in, but um, there's been enough transition, I don't know why it was never done. Um, after they made the agreement to flat fee everything with special ed, but they're still separate. So it's just one more one more headache, one more headache to project.
Is it like a wash, like the money comes in and it's just going right back out?
It was intended, so it keeps, it keeps the C A D and Medicaid reimbursement and back, uh, uh, back when it was envisioned, I don't know, Peter Torrey, even the, maybe it was Peter, it's been here forever as I understand it, but back then, it did keep a balance year over year to help some of the fluctuation of special ed costs. Now it's essentially flat. It needed, sometimes carries a ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars, but it won't be too much in there because every year um, every year we make the transfer over and then if there are two costs, there are costs there that can't fit, I transfer them back over to general fund against tuition, not against tuition, against airlines or um service lines.
So it's, it's more just to show the money coming in and going out.
And it really, and it really was intended at its outset uh to capture any of the costs, especially that would then needing to be split up between the two districts. Rather than, that, it just, it offered, I assume, because this hasn't happened while I've been here, but it offered clarity to what costs had to be divvied up. So they, they orphaned all the costs in the special revenue fund and then build it out and brought in the revenue wash.
Okay, thank you everyone. We're, we're.
Where will we see that offset though?
We're moving on to the regular um special ed, which Lisa has very patiently been waiting to ask questions. So Lisa, you have the floor.
Right, um, I have three questions, but I think I'll start with the one that's more connected to the out of district placement conversation that we're having, which is if we were in a situation where we found some way to move some out of district student or students back into the schools, would there be implications for other resources in terms of staff or space or supplies or anything else that would have a budget impact? Because I'm just thinking about how much we're already scrambling for pairs and places to put people for therapy and different things and we make it work.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's juggle. So I guess I'm wondering, if we wanted to think in that direction, what would be the spillover impact in terms of how we're running special education inside the building?
Yes, so if a, if a student was, the I E P T felt the student was ready to come back. We would make sure, of course, we have the resources in the school to do, and that may, we may have to strengthen some things. We may have to enhance other things, we may have to tweak and move some things around. Um, but you know, that's what we do is we adjust our resources for the kids and that's essentially, you know, maybe we pull the behavior specialists or write a behavior plan and have a long-term subsidy with that kid for three weeks while the baby behavior plan was implemented and the regular picture they're going to do it. We, you know, that's just an example of how we would use our resources to.
But I think at the root, I think, the root of your question is, is it is our, when, when we pull kids back in, is there some disruption to our systems?
I don't have disruption in the right word, but definitely we have finite numbers of human beings, finite amounts of classroom space.
Yeah.
And a lot of other kids with I E Ps and Bible course have mandated sort of stipulations around their services that might mean there can't be another kid in the room with them. So I guess I'm just trying to understand if we wanted to think about, maybe there's three kids with a similar out of district need that we might bring into an elementary school, would that change how we're providing special education? out of district need that we might bring into an elementary school, would that change how we're providing special education in that building beyond those three kids, I guess, is what I'm trying to think.
And, and I think the answer is, the answer is, is cool.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's where I think it's up, but.
No, but, but, but I think it's a, I, I think it goes to, um, I've been in a lot of these conversations in different places and I think there's always a desire to be, you, you look at the big figures and then we should just be, we should just be able to. Um, and it's, it's far more complicated than we should just be able to. Uh, for all the reasons, some of the reasons that you're, you're highlighting. Uh, it's the, you know, we got a, the staffing issue tends to be very, with kids who are very specialized at a district placement. Very often it's because the types of staff that are necessary to do that work. We're not in a position to pay the market funds to pay those people to have, to service one or two kids. Um, and uh, and we're not able to fully staff up uh, some of the other positions that we have as well. So there, I think the, I think some of the premises upon which you're building are right, are right. Uh, this can be really challenging and sometimes on the surface appears like an easy way to, to save funds. Very often, it has a bunch of ripple effects that are beyond what people think.
And I think, I'm gonna skip one question because I think we sort of already picked up. The other thing I'm curious about is just sort of the supply and demand in terms of the deficit of paras. And I'm curious, and I don't know if you have those numbers off the top of your head, but I guess I'm curious about if there's been a change over time in the number of students who need paras in the buildings? Or if there's been a change in the number of kids who need one to one? And do we feel like that gap between the number of people we can hire and the number of kids who need those people is gonna get better? Or, or is I'm just thinking in terms of the budget?
Uh, you know, we looked at that this morning, monitored those numbers really closely. We have, it's a handful. Yeah, I mean, I think they're spread pretty evenly.
It's a better number?
It's seven, eight, seven, I think we picked up eight, eight today.
That is a little better than the last three.
And it's, it's distributed pretty evenly from preschool to grade twelve, so there's no school that I think has big holes. So, to be candid, I, I chased, I chased one perspective, right? I took the, the guy with the big dollar sign on his chest and I said, so tell me if we're able to do it without these people for as long as we have, do we really need them? What is the real need? I mean, I, I just posed it, I posed it for, you know, as a, as a, as a, you know, as a seed for a conversation. But I, I was really impressed with the conversation that ensued, Zach was involved and we were talking about the fact that, and we recognize in the buildings, you have people that are really stepping up. And they're working hard to try to fill those needs and, and, and cover for some of them vacancies, those absences. So it's not that we don't have the need, it's that we are continuing to do the best that we can to serve our students while we're also doing the best we can trying to improve to fill those, those vacancies. But I, it's a conversation that from the, from the financial perspective, I try to advocate that we should always be thinking through. I hear folks say, so much, so-and-so left, I, or I'm, I'm, I'm down two paras, I need a para. I'm not really entitled to know, what do you need those two paras for? What is it? Who are they serving? What are the needs? Do you really need them? Or are they just in the budget for my student? And so they work really hard to try to make sure that they are careful with the resources, meeting the needs of students and, and not, and not having excess staff. It's hard to imagine excess staff in your special ed, but you know, that they're, they're not, they're not hiring just for the sake of, of another face of name. They're doing so to meet the needs of identified students.
That's helpful. I think sort of along the lines of what Brian was talking about in terms of just understanding the numbers. If it's possible in some way later in the process, just to get a look at like how many students need paras at all or need them one to one, was what that trend is? Because I'm, I like hearing that we have fewer openings, but that doesn't help us if we have four kids that need a service.
Help me. Nope.
Does that make sense?
Makes, makes sense.
You know, something that I'm excited about is we've started to, well, starting with Patty and I worked up use our early stages to really differentiate the professional development more of paras professionals. So they're not lumped into more global learning, but focused on student needs. And I think they can, you know, I think that turns into efficiency in terms of their work and they can potentially service more kids. So we've looked at professional development and really using the time we have to beef up our staff.
Right.
Yes, yes.
I have a couple of questions. So um, approximately, and I'm, I'm gonna pick your brain here. Approximately, how many students are in the special ed program in district?
You know, I'd really have to look.
Okay.
I'd really have to.
Okay.
Like, so how many I E Ps do we have?
How many I E Ps?
Yeah, I go to the daily website.
Yeah, just, I'm just curious about that. And um, with that said, so.
So bad at those questions, like.
Well, I know, I told you I was gonna pick your brain.
Did you? What a really rough number to help?
A rough number would help.
Middle three hundreds. Three hundred and, yeah, three hundred, it could be as high as three eighty, but I'd wanna say it's three sixty-five or something like that.
So percentage wise, is it twenty?
Well, no, 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 we, how, it's under twenty.
It's under twenty, okay.
Are we the low teens thirteen, fourteen, well, thirteen, fourteen, something like, I don't think, we're doing, yes. And I can bring back a war, but just to have some more, just to give you a ballpark.
No, that, I, I wanted just the ballpark. Now, um, in regard to your um, case managers, how, what's the average special, um, what's the average students under each case manager?
Uh, about between nine and twelve.
Between nine and twelve. And where does that differentiate that? I'm not gonna say that right now because I'm overthinking it. Where does that difference come in? Like, is it more, is there um, less students in elementary school per case manager? Or just dependent on the?
It's pretty. Um, it's, it's pretty consistent. I think it varies a little bit depending on how many kids are per grade.
Okay.
But from, really from kindergarten, preschool's different, preschool's fifty fifty. So we just go kindergarten to grade twelve. It's probably nine to maybe fourteen would be the high number.
Okay.
Uh, but those are pretty manageable numbers for special educators when you compare that metric to other districts.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's great having nice manageable caseload numbers here. I'm used to mid twenties, thirties.
I've heard of some horror stories that, yeah.
I think Liz has a question, Liz?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate um, Nathan ha- adding the green there for where the added positions are for um, special education. So I've just gone through PEET, elementary, P M S, P H S. Um, I don't believe there's any in speech. So it looks like really the only addition that the budget is calling for is an added teacher um, for the PEET program, is that correct? And I guess, as you're sort of looking into that, my follow-up is, is that I'm a huge proponent for early childhood education. I believe if we can uh, get these kids in the door, get them educated and, and, and get them on our uh, purview, the younger they are, then we may nix some of these kids that are having to go to out of district placement in middle school and high school. I know that's not always the case, but you know, I think that if we can really be hands-on with children when they're younger, um, and really help them um, navigate their um, their social emotional learning and um, and meet their needs then, while their brain develop, is, their brain is developing the most. Um, I think it's crucial. And so with that said, I'm wondering, I know that Trish just asked you numbers for special ed, but I'm hoping that you could pop me a number for how many kids are in the PEET program? And with adding another teacher, are we able to tuition kids um, that come into this program? I know that, you know, it'd be ideal to have free public preschool for all children. That would be the ideal platform here. Um, however, I know we're not there yet. So I guess I'm wondering if we could bring more kids in so that it's not just um, I E S P kids? And um, and also I guess I'm wondering too, like, where do we see the I E S P state reimbursements? Like, where does that show up on the budget? So first question, is this, is the? First question, is this the only position you're adding in special ed or you're requesting is the PEET teacher?
So, yeah, the PEET teacher is the only special ed um, position that's new to the budget for FY twenty-five.
Okay, and then how? How many kids are in the PEET program?
I can't, I'd have to look that up, but right now.
It's just a one classroom, right?
No, there's two sections, two classrooms, and we're at maximum in terms of our class guidelines. And then in February, we're predicting a number of three-year-olds with disabilities starting with us. And that'll put us over the class guidelines. So we're really working on knowing these numbers are coming. Addressing that, and that's why it's, so.
Well, I guess your other concern. Sorry, my other concern with that though is if, if we have these I E S Ps and these, we have to meet these state required needs of these children and you're saying that we're gonna be hitting three classrooms. I mean, these children should really be in classrooms with their peers, which isn't all other kids that have I E S Ps. So you know, there should be children that don't have, you know, I E Ps or in these programs.
Can you talk about the, that particular issue with PEET and the design of the student population?
Sure. We have a wonderful integrated preschool, so students with disabilities are matched fifty, at least fifty fifty with typically developing students. So there are typically developing peers, at least fifty percent or greater every day. Preschool's open, because sometimes kids don't go to preschool. It's not like Monday through Friday. Sometimes they go on Tuesdays and Thursdays because they're, you know what I mean? That's kinda how it works. It's a very different model, but we do make sure that we have the appropriate number of non-identified peers as prescribed by law, and we follow that, hundred percent.
Is there a way though, it sounds, it sounds like we need another classroom though, is what you're saying. And so is there a way that we could expand the Little Clipper program or what are we? Are, are there anybody, any talks about what this might look like or what classroom space will be used? Is there room at Little Harbor to expand into another classroom? What it, what is this looking like for us?
Um, yeah, I mean, Nancy, um, we've looked, I've had conversations with Courtney Richens at the Little Clippers program to see if there was any kind of value added in terms of that. We haven't identified any real leads there, but we have identified, I believe we have some space at Little Harbor that's gonna free up some shifting or something where we're working. We're working, I guess we're working on.
We don't have, we don't have a solution yet, but.
There's a lot of issues.
We're working towards that. We have the position, you know, being able to provide adequate space next year. Ideally at Little Harbor, uh, but we're still working through how that's gonna happen.
So is that gonna be um, another added cost that we're gonna be looking at potentially?
I don't, we don't see that, I don't think there's a big structural cost that wouldn't be something that we couldn't, we couldn't reality any. What's that?
Do we need more than just this added teacher?
No, I mean, we're, I don't think so. I think it's a big step for us to have the extra teacher. Then it puts us in a position to be able to bring on the students with disabilities who would qualify and then being able to um, you know, co-populate that classroom with students who are, who are not identified as having an educational disability.
Community kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Liz. Um, do we have any other questions? Any other questions about the regular ed budget?
Or the, no, I had a district special ed.
Right, right. I, I have one question. You know, so we um, contract audiology, vision, some P T, some O T, some speech. Would it ever be economically sensible for us to hire those people in our district rather than contract the services?
Yeah, I think you experienced that already because two years back, one year, uh, we, we reached the tipping point where the contracted services for a behavioral, a B C B A behaviorist. You, you had one behaviorist in house maybe, and we hired another one because we had contracted for sufficient to justify that. Um, I, I will tell you, as part of our, our budget discussion, the, the psychology team uh, in, in Rick's house, they were looking to add another psychologist. Um, and we took very seriously the city manager's suggestion that there should be no net increase in our headcount, our F T Es. And so we are hoping that we will chase the psychology needs in the district with some contracted services. Going over, the overage, beyond what, beyond what our, our staff can do. Um, hoping that we can aim it that way and maybe delay for another year, having to actually hire somebody. But what you do find, you're right, but what you picked up, I think, audiology, uh, physical therapy. Vision. Vision, uh, hearing impaired, uh, uh, teacher for the hearing impaired. Those are small enough contracted services that they don't need to having a full-time person. It may also be difficult to find someone who's willing to come for the rate that we would pay based on a collectively bargained scale.
Yep.
Because hit or miss going out and working independently or working for a, a, a firm. Uh, they may, we find that more lucrative, it may be more, uh, it may also give them different balance in life, I don't know. But I, I know that we struggled in the past in other districts when I've looked for a couple of those specialists. Um, but I think we, we do it and when we do and we need to, uh, bring that to you. One of the things that we find is that bringing them in sometimes is of greater value because they, there's other things that they can do even while they're on the block that you can't get out of a contacted service. And so, um, so we, we like to find that opportunity when it exists, but remember.
But we don't always, we don't always, uh, we're not always, sorry, we're not always in a position to compete in the marketplace.
Yep.
For those people. Uh, and very often what we need to, what we get people who distinctly have a mission driven idea about wanting to be in the school. And so as a result, they end up taking less money to come work for us because they're committed to that concept. And if we're straight up competing against the hospital, we're gonna lose uh, most times. Uh, and so we, you know, so sometimes, one of the things that some districts do, um, sometimes they, we, you know, they contract uh, multiple districts will contract with a collaborative, um, where the collaborative does not withhold into a collective bargaining agreement. So our, our, you know, some of our folks are boxed into a contract that's dependent on the teacher's market, which is not the market that they live in. Uh, and then they're put into a position, like I said, if we don't have people that are specifically like, I really wanna work in schools, um, then we're very often better off being in a service, uh, paying for service as opposed to I.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Lisa. You mentioned a B C B A, just reminded me of one other thing. We had a program for many years that was specifically for autistic kids at the middle school, the kids program. And I wonder if I got phased out just because we shifted strategy in terms of how we serve those kids or if it was a budget issue? It's like I know a lot of people who went through that over the years.
I, you know, I'm, I don't kind of go back and talk to the middle school. Um, they don't have any substantially separate programs.
Okay, I didn't mean to.
But I have heard about the big end of that.
I, I, maybe I can give you more of the history. My understanding is that program from its inception through its most recent incarnation warped a bit in terms of who the, who the target students were. Um, and started off as one thing and then kind of evolves into something else. So, but we're having, I mean, we can come back with more detail on that kind of story.
Okay, I think Liz has one last question and then I think we can sum up for the night. Liz?
Um, this is appropriate time to ask any budget question, right? I mean, we're not, we're just.
No, I'm just talking about special ed tonight.
Okay.
But if you wanna give us, if you wanna give us a preview of a question, then we can come back.
Yeah, I guess my preview would be a follow-up to the email we received from the um, the boosters, um, the music boosters. And just to um, answer that, because I, what I noticed on your slides that you gave us at the last meeting, the city manager's slide that requested a budget cut, I almost was gonna ask about it at the last meeting, but it almost seemed like a sick joke to me that on that slide that requested budget cuts, um, there was a picture of the band. So I don't know if it was more reality because back when I, in two thousand and five, I believe, or two thousand and four, we, we saw significant cuts to the arts and that's where, when we were talking budget cuts, the arts were the first thing to be discussed, it seemed like. And so I don't know what's going on with, with um, Mr. Sorrell's position or if he's choosing to move on or what the scenario is. But um, I, I guess that's what I really would wanna know is if, if, what are we talking about? If, if we're considering budget cuts or, or not? And if we are considering where, what's being cut, is that, is that part of the conversation? Like, why did we get this email from the boosters association? So um, if we can have some follow-up there and if there's any discussion that has been had about other types of cuts. I know that we sort of heard last minute about Spanish. Um, but you know, and so I don't know if there's any other internal conversations that are happening about some types of cuts. Um, but I'd like to know what those conversations are and where we're at because I just think that the arts are so crucial and it was such a, a huge milestone for me in my life. And um, I hate to see that those are always the first to be cut back on. And I, I know we have dwindling numbers due to COVID, but um, I would really just like to see more behind it. And it makes, it ma- it feels unfortunate that, you know, I think COVID's had a lot to do with it. But um, we had a really robust percussion ensemble and uh, state, you know, world champion percussion ensemble. Um we had a really robust percussion ensemble and uh state, you know, world champion percussion ensemble in Portsmouth. Um and to see the leader of that go, uh you know, maybe maybe an Ozon accord, I don't know, um is pretty heartbreaking. So um. I I just, I.
We will address that. That will be addressed. That issue will definitely be addressed at a future meeting. So thank you, Liz. Okay, any other questions from anyone? Okay, our next gathering is January twenty third. Our um regular meeting is seven P M. But we also will have a public hearing that night for our budget. So Liz, it would be a good time to ask parents to. Come out and speak about that particular issue if they're so inclined. And if that, if parents, community members, students, if anyone wants to come to the that public hearing. Um that would be critical to have that kind of input. So uh spread the word that we're having this public hearing. Um so that will be the first item on our agenda and then our meeting will be at seven, correct?
Uh that's correct. Yeah, yeah.
So I would say traditionally, it's not a big budget deliberation night because it's a full regular meeting.
Right.
We break out some time to make sure that we provide opportunity for the public to contribute to our budget dialogue. Um but in the meantime, continue to say that if you have budget questions. Email them along to Zach and myself and Nancy and Brian so that uh we can. Field those and we can start working on answering those questions.
Okay, I think Lisa did that for today's, with her questions about special ed, so. Okay, does it, does everybody, um, oh, first I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight with the horrible driving situation. Thank you for our Zoom participants who are all ill. So um we hope that everybody's feeling better. And uh we'll see you next Tuesday.
Well, that's good. Thank you so much.
Motion, Lisa, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, Lisa, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we supposed to do a roll call?
Roll call. Even on a.
Yes.
Pink Blues.
Yes.
Fish Campbell.
Yes.
Terry Nolte. Jump off, Brandon French. Nancy Flavers, Lisa Rappaport.
Yep.
Right on, Byron Mattow.
Yes.
Oh, Jerry.
Uh yeah, Terry, we did ethics and it is uh Liz will be handling it.
Thank you, Drive Steve, everyone.
You wanna be careful going home, but not.